You ready to have a note?
Yep.
All right. Thank everybody for coming. We'll start the meeting with the judge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Any additions or deletions? We've got one here, B1 for.
That's for the Visitors Council, Governor. I don't have anything else.
No, anything? Dan? Mom? I'm open for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'd like that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that you want to discuss? See a none? I'm open for a motion to approve that.
Don't make the motion.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Visitors of council, Coy, you're up.
Included, Mr. Borkstrom did pass out some items, so if you can reference those during his conversation.
Coy Borkstrom, 20 East Veterans Memorial Highway, Cassin. Okay, what I've got here, I stumbled across this here looking for some transfer switches for your households. Uh, this is kind of a neat, compact little unit here. That everybody knows their electric meter on their house, I assume. Uh, basically you pull the cover off, pull your meter out. You got one wire to connect. Put your cover back on, then they put the meter in here. And, uh, replace the ring on here to lock it on, put their seals on it so it's no one can get in it. So, I'll start with down here if you don't mind, we just want to take a look at it, send it around. Underneath is where they have a cord, their own special cord. That comes with it, that has a nice little four-pronged cord that will go in it. It's set up basically for a max of a thirty amp, which is like an eight thousand watt generator, roughly around there. And like I said, I just kind of stumbled across it. I was looking in, I'm not promoting anybody or anything at Home Depot, and found this on here. And one of the reasons I like it is it's automatic. So as soon as you, the power goes out, you plug your cord in. You either have your generator running, turn the on switch on, it automatically switches that over to standby. And you've got power. You can basically kind of run your house as normal. If you say have like an eight thousand, eighty-five hundred watt generator. So when power comes back on, that will stay on auxiliary power until you shut off the power and the switch inside will disconnect. There's no way possible for it to be live as long as you're, you know, shut the generator off. So, it is, uh, more economical than doing a RONC. We in the trade would call it RONC transfer switch, which is about the size of a suitcase. Small, not the carry-on, but a little bit bigger, which you put on the side of the house as normal. If people like to plan ahead and put the transfer switch on, sometimes you can get them right in your service alone. But that also costs more at that time. So, on this one here, Jared kind of explained that there's no, you know, not supposed to be any connections behind the meter. Uh, once this is plugged in, this is all homeowner equipment behind the meter. The meter is now here, so behind the meter is here. So basically they're still doing the same thing, to plug their meter in and pull the meter out. Now everything is still homeowner-owned. Cause I, my little caricature drawing of the cartoon with the homeowner, he got the red and the green. Cause sometimes people get confused that. The red is what you guys actually own if you have an underground or overhead service. So once you lose power, you, terminals burn up, your socket goes bad, you own all that. The city of Cassin Utility will not touch it. Um, being in business for twenty-eight years here, I, I know it. So as soon as they pull their meter out, they just have to make sure it's safe, it's on you to fix it. So, if this damages, it's on you. If your meter socket is damaged, it's on you. If for some reason the city's meter falls apart, which I've never seen happen, it's on them. So, the idea of putting these in, it's quick, it's easy. Uh, this one here is seven hundred dollars. Right, just thought on the money, within a few pennies. I just quoted a RONC transfer switch and had it installed, that was seventeen hundred dollars, plus the generator. This is still plus the generator. To do my mother's house is about twenty-five hundred dollars because of the situation, the way we did the service when we did the house. And that's none of your concern, but that's just the different scenarios that you can get into. Minimum about fifteen hundred dollars, max three grand, to do a RONC. So, um, that's why I like this one here. So, and then on some of Jared's concerns here, I looked at. It, it says like in, I'm assuming that six oh seven is a city.
Yeah, that's part of the electrical rules that were passed by the council a couple of years ago.
So, I'll try to keep it as short as possible, sorry.
No.
So it says like the no customers may be connected to the meter, you're secondary wiring or under the terminals of the meter. That basically just stands for that meter. Once you pull that meter out, everything else is the homeowner's. Like I said, nothing, the city can't do anything besides if there's power. You'd have to disconnect it at the transformer or put a slug in it to make it safe, so. Dan don't stick his fingers in it, you know, so. Um, otherwise, there is, the, the reason there's no, um, use it for a junction box is back in the day. Um, they used to have what they called carneys or slip bolts. People go in there, you have your main service, they want to add on. So they go in there and they try to splice onto those wires in there. And that's the reason why there's no, no power company lets you use it for a junction box, nobody. So, um, you can't even extend the wire. So, that, that's a good rule. Uh, and then the other thing too, when you go down below. He says about how if they had a power outage that they'd have to wait for a master electrician or electrician to come in there and take it out. I think a few of you guys in here know that you can work on your own electrical on your house. You can do everything plus the service. So this has, if you had to look in the back of it, city comes out, pulls theirs out, looks in there. You can physically take this out, and this comes out with a disconnect. So if you want to unplug it, you can take that out. Cause this is not live. And it shouldn't be live because the city shouldn't be working on it live either. But you can physically just unplug this, and you can either just look at it like, like that, put it back in, unplug it, set it on the ground. They're that simple. Otherwise, the, uh, there's one other list in there that I kind of typed up. Tim had asked me to do a little bit more legwork and maybe an idea on here. Of, of what, as an electrician, I would like to see as, you know, something to protect the cities. Cause even in this here, it doesn't mention anything about UL listed. It doesn't actually even say you can't put the transfer switch in under six oh seven. So maybe he missed one, I don't know. Um, there's plenty of people that I talked to that, um, use them. I talked with Steel with Sika, the head guy over there, and he said, I asked him, I said, "What's your thoughts?" He said, "I don't like them." I said, "Why is that?" He goes, "Honestly, I don't know. I think it's because they're new." But they have them out, they haven't had any issues. I called the company to see if they've had any major issues on callbacks or sending them back or warranty issues. They haven't anything, had anything major. I didn't ask if they had one or two, I just asked for major. Uh, everybody but that has had them, Steel with Sika, Goodhue, uh, Peoples Co-op, they all have them. So, and there hasn't been any big issues so far, they're working. Um, it's, I think it would help with having it available to the city for some of the people. Not everybody's going to go out and buy the seven hundred dollar switch, um, pay an electrician a hundred bucks to put it in, plus a thirty-five dollar permit. Uh, cause I even, when I was in business in town here, I talked people out of putting transfer switches in. It didn't make sense. We have a good power company here. We got a good response time, always have. And I told them, I said, "It doesn't pay unless we use, lose our feeder coming into town from XL Energy. There's no sense really even to have one." But some people do, because they have, he mentions about battery backup sump pumps. How many times have people had dead batteries in their cars? Guess what? It doesn't start. I mean, it's all, it's not a failsafe, neither is this. But this is a redundancy to that also. So, um, what else do we have here? Then I think it's probably about it for what I have to say. You got any questions?
Any questions? No?
I'm not sure if it's important. I'm not an electrician.
What, so if they put that in and put the meter in, what's the say? They hooked a generator up, do they run that all the time and not run off the city?
Well, you'd have some certain issues there if they did.
Well, I'm just asking, because you just said, I mean, if you plug.
You can.
It automatically feeds the bike.
Yes, so you can run, like a normal household, you could probably run a couple refrigerators, your furnace. Forest air furnace will start, you can run your lights at will. If you have an electric stove, electric dryer, those you'd have to, you know, watch. I have a, had a gal out on thirteen that she put in the wrong transfer switch and an eight thousand standby generator. She had the well, the freezer, the refrigerator, and all of her lights on in the middle of the winter time when the power went out. Cause that's out there, you know, they go out all the time. So, and she said her generator never even balked at it. So you can kind of get by normal usage. If you're going to entertain for Thanksgiving and you want your electric, electric ovens on, and where else, it's not going to happen. Your generator will tell you, because it's going to start moving all over the place out there. So, but, and your comment would be is that if they have a lot of extra money to throw on gasoline, because generators aren't cheap, you know that, you know, so. You're going to go through a tank every four to six hours, depending upon what you're running. You know, so, but you could, if you wanted to go off-grid, didn't pay your bill. You know, you could probably hook it up, but if you're going to spend the money on gas, because you didn't pay your bill.
Car magazine, natural gas.
Yeah, you know, cut off your nose despite your face, you know.
I, I just, that's just something hit my head right away, and I'm like, are people going to try doing that?
Yep, well, we had Norbert Schurger out here in Colorado nine years ago. I set his whole farm up on a gigantic diesel. Cause XL wouldn't bring him three phase, so he thought, "I'll do it myself." As soon as drying season came up, he shut their power off, fired his diesel generator up. They were there that next day wondering where all their power went, or how come it's not using it? He said, "You guys won't give me power without charging someone astronomical." So for average of ten years, he did that, for a month. Ran off his generator. Saved them money, but that's an extreme situation too.
Wayne Elberts just did the same thing with his grain dryer.
Yep.
Um, Hertz is building a house for his kid. They're going to run that out, the generator, full time.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, nowadays you can probably get one that's efficient enough to be able to do that, so, but. And here, these are set up for your, your homeowners, you know, not everybody's going to go out and get one. Um, obviously, the reason that prompted this is mom and Kenny would like one. And in their situation, it is expensive to change it out. And Jared made a comment of going case by case. I don't think you would have enough of them because it's an investment. It's, you know, mom and Kenny got a good Kohler generator from the guys in the cities. That's fifteen hundred bucks, you got seven hundred into this here. You know, still got thirty-five dollar permit. So you're, you know, two grand, it's not just everybody's just going to go out and do this. But it's an option that's out, that is out there. You know, they could, so you can go and buy it, take their shot, and get a snowstorm, no power, then you go down and buy, try to buy a generator. You know, so, uh, the other thing, we do allow them in the city of Cassin. In Windsor Court and, what's the other one, I keep forgetting.
South Fork?
South Fork. You can use them out there. Reason being, Peoples Co-op.
Well, I think that's a point that I know Jared mentioned to me, was that typically in cities, for example, like you mentioned Owatonna, Rochester Public Utilities, they, they don't typically allow, a lot of the co-ops in this area do. And part of that, I know he mentioned, was the service response time. You know, for example, you live out in a rural farmstead and you have to, you know, you want to get power back. It may take them a lot longer during an ice storm, whereas here, generally speaking, our response time is much higher in the city. So that's, he did mention that they are used, just not typically what he's seen at least in the cities.
Yep.
I'm going to present my ignorance here, but if the meter, the city's meter stays in place and the generator kicks in, is there leak each back?
Nope, nope, it switches both poles or pole right out. So they cannot backfeed even when they come live, or if that service, that pole top unit is a problem. They cannot do that, and that's because of the UL listing and the National Electric Code does not allow that to happen. The only one that may not, and it does not in this one, is the neutral, the white, does not switch. But that's anywhere. You can put, the RONCs are only two pole, they do not disconnect the neutral, the third pole in there. Which every power company would like to have done, makes sense, but they don't require any C, so it's not done. But they do open up, and they, as long as that generator is plugged in and running, that'll energize that switch. But if it still needs power and it runs out of gas, it flips back to power company. So it would have to be physically turned back on and fired up and the switch turned on to switch it again, so.
Those are internal switches?
Mm-hmm. It defaults to power company. So, every time, unless you put the generator and plug it in and turn it on, it'll default to the power company.
Those are electronic switches?
Yep. Yep, and they've got, I don't know if anybody's noticed, I should have said, so we got lights down here for troubleshooting. So you've got some stuff down there, if you figure that, when I fire my generator up, it's not working, they'll have some codes down there that you can look at and see what's happened. So.
All right. So is there an intent to have an action on this night?
Well, I mean, my thought process doing, is that Jared's not in the office this week. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to, at the next council meeting, have him come and explain his reasoning. And that way, we have time to think about it too. I mean, as, as, you know, I've talked with Coy a little bit outside of the meeting, and I think, you know, this certainly has some potential. So I'd like to see exactly, but it, to me, I think maybe we'd look to take action at the next council meeting in July here. That would make sense to me, I guess. Is that okay, Coy?
Oh yeah, no, I know the process.
Yep, yep, yep.
I just wanted to come up and show it to you, because like I said, I think it's a, it's a good option for any power company. And like I said, with XL Energy, they're ones that do not allow it. And I don't, I'm surprised a company that that's big doesn't have them on the shelf and rent them out for twenty dollars a month. You know, maybe they think it'd be too much of a hassle, but.
Well, which guy, Martin, you're not happy with?
I did not talk with XL Energy, uh, the one power company, I could not get a hold of, I was trying to get a, I think it was, uh, City of Owatonna. I just won't deal with RPO, because it's just too much bureaucracy down there, so.
Well, good luck with XL.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
They have issues. Uh, what I wanted to say was, I've been involved with this thing somewhat, a different brand, but similar, very similar. Uh, we're hooking up meter socket disconnects, you know, for generators all the time. So this is something we looked at. I'm not an electrician, I'd feel better if Jared gave us some answers, but this is common. This, this is something that's coming.
And like I said, it's not something that you're going to see a lot of them, but some people might want to be prepared for that. I mean, there's a lot of people that have had a lot of water issues and, you know, I'm not saying that would have solved some of them, but it may have gotten a couple.
I have a generator.
You know, so.
It's common, it's smart, especially when you live in a wet town.
Yep, so, okay, appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Have a night. Yep.
All right, so, since the mayor's out of town, there's no mayor's report. Uh, public forum, any cards?
Yep.
All right. Let's move down to the public hearing. Uh, easement vacation of all easements and HAC second subdivision. We'll start off with a staff report.
Sure, um, including your package, you've got a couple of items, and then I also poured out some additional information to the council members. And thanks to Councilor Ferris for good questions. So I did, uh, wanted to make sure everybody got that same info. Um, in essence, um, you know, what I think we're looking at tonight is that this project's gone through a number of different, uh, iterations and forums and things like that. Um, we want they move forward, which means that we kind of need to do a, a vacation of the current easements to allow that plating process to be finalized at the, at Dodge County, so that the milars can be generated and things like that. So, um, that's basically what we're looking at, is looking at a vacation of the current easements which existed when the, uh, was previously platted as a HAC, um, development.
So, all easements that are needed for the property are taken in account for?
So the, the new easements we put in place is part of that plating, that's correct, yep. So the milars will have our, will have electrical, water and sewer, um, and staff is aware of those. And has a, should have those on place brand, that's my knowledge of it.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Aaron, welcome tonight.
Can you mention anything?
It's up to you.
Aaron, Aaron Thompson, five oh four Sixteenth Street, uh, northeast. Um, yeah, this is, I think, just kind of a, a process that needs to be done. Um, my civil engineer actually thought it was done a, a year ago when it was actually first presented, but it needed to be a separate public hearing. So, that's kind of how this came about, and, uh, so definitely what Tim said, just kind of trying to make the next couple of things happen, so.
Well, you should have, I did pass these out, so this is the version that was approved when we did our amended plat back in, in March there. So, um, so you can kind of see how things are going to go, as they do have some of the easements already in place there. Um, and some things we're going to be finalizing as we, we, uh, you know, I know you're looking to probably get started digging this fall maybe, or something like that. So as soon as possible, but we wanted to bring it before the council so you could take a look, so.
Any questions for Aaron?
One, and please don't take this in any way, shape, or form personally or as mutual, but proper notice was given about the hearing and everything, Tim.
That's correct, we did provide publication, um, there's a ten-day publication requirement, so.
Yeah, I found out by mail what it was, so.
Okay.
Didn't roughly know, but yeah, I saw it on the counter, I'm like, "Oh, I better get that on my calendar."
All right. See a none? Thank you. Anybody from the public who want to make a comment on this? Okay, last call. See a none, we'll close the public hearing. Council discussion? Questions, comments on it?
Tim, based on what you said when I asked about this, this is just a formality that leaves to, or this is something that should have been done?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly how it all went last fall. You know, I think it would have been something that probably would have maybe been done normally a little earlier in the process. But, um, you know, that's, we, we're trying to get it sort of rectified and figured out now, so I think that makes sense to me. I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Linda or Brandon, so originally last fall was when they originally approved that final plat. So typically that would have been maybe when it would have been done, but because we wanted to have that slightly amended, um, it seems like a sensible thing to do now.
Yeah, so really the, the easements that we're vacating were for a different lot configuration, like drainage, drainage easements between the, between the old lot configuration. So since we're kind of changing those lots, we need different easements. So all the processes, we vacate the old ones, because lots aren't the same, we don't need those easements anymore. They go away, we replant the property without the easements on there, because they've gone away. And we replant in part of that plating process, the easements that we needed for sewer and water and drainage. So we've done that in the plating process, it was almost an administrative step at this point, something.
Thank you.
Any others?
Just one question. So the one part on the south, unflatt, or, on the south part, there's no tunnels in it. Is there easements included, or we would have to do that again?
They would have to, when they refigure that, if they're putting anything in there, those easements would then be included in that plating. They would have to replant or redo a conditional use permit, which would then include the easements for whatever they put in there.
So the existing easement that we have now, would they be acceptable if we add more there? Would they, would you have enough drainage for that, or would we have? You know what I'm saying, Brandon?
Yeah, they come, you know, it's a hypothetical application, and it would be a developer's problem, developer have to figure it out, um, at the end of the day. Uh, we've kind of looked at that, because there's been some talk about some other, um, girl, there are other, other developments. So we've been discussing that and planning that. Um, specifically that roadway is a, is a, actually an outlaw, which has a drainage utility easement across it, so. Any stormwater facility to run out could go down that outlaw. In addition to that, along the west property line, there's a drainage utility easement. Um, so I could accommodate some of the drainage off that lot, so. I guess I'm comfortable with what's currently proposed, um, with easements that are proposed in the current plat. And if there's a change or another application by the, the developer, I don't think it'd be their problem, and they would have to work that through. But I don't see any, any flaws, because we probably would like to brought those to the developers' attention, so.
I was just thinking ahead, you know, all of a sudden, you go down the road, you'll add more typically undersized, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Well, I think drainage was the biggest issue that I know Brandon and I, when we talked with, with Aaron about was, the rest of them aren't kind of a standard. But we know that it's a compact area, potentially with a lot of impervious surface, so that definitely something, especially in that area of town where we already have some, some water issues, we have ponds that are undersized, so. That's why I was just thinking, you know.
It'd be easier to do it now, than you're planning to do it later.
Yeah, so I think if there was another application or a second part of that, it would have to come back to the conditional use permit process. Uh, the plat made likely would not change at all, because it's already going to be an established lot there, so there is a development there. Um, we use existing drainage utilities, and if we just tweak our utility slightly, so I can see if fatal flaws in that, that thought process, but something we may be telling in the future, so.
Most other question I had is just, easier to ask now than later.
Any?
Nope.
Okay, I have none, so I'm open for a motion of action regarding the easement vacation for HAC second subdivision. I'll go ahead and move to approve easement vacation for HAC second subdivision. Is there a second? Okay, we got a motion of second. All those in favor?
All in.
Opposed?
Okay.
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Yep, thank you.
Committee reports, park board. Got a copy of the Fedex draft? Dan, you want to highlight anything there?
Well, park board was discussing, kind of, due to the shorter season and opening up the pool in the mornings, they wanted to lower some of the fees for the groups, for the weekday morning large group fee.
Don't remember exactly what it was, if it was two fifty, and you wanted to go down to two hundred?
It was two fifty, yeah. And they just, the park board thought it would be a good idea to lower, because groups have, pretty much, they're going to pay it no matter what. They're going to, if they can't come, they're still paying the way it comes. There's two-day cares doing two days apiece, and then Wednesday is open lap. Basically, we're going to fill it four days a week. So they wanted to lower that, because the park board thought that was a good, that was the big hopes that. And I think they were already charging that now, they.
Yeah, so we will be taking a look at the, the Quack Center fees and the off-seasons. But, um, that was their recommendation at this time. So I think there, there's some systemic issues with those charges, based on the number of lifeguards that are required. You know, one of the issues we're running into right now is because of the number of lifeguards required, you know, at that charge, we're basically guaranteed to lose money. I mean, and obviously we're a city, I try to still think of it a little bit as a business, which, if you're not making any money, then you're not, you're better off not opening it now. We want to make sure that it's open for these folks. Part of the issue, and I think part of the reason they made that change was because this year, um, some of these folks who normally would have family passes, who would have been covered with this daycare kind of a thing, were having to pay per time. You know, and if their kids are going, guaranteed to be going on Mondays and Wednesdays every week, you know, obviously they would have gotten a family pass, so it would have been, it would have been half the cost. So that's part of the reason they lowered that amount down. So we're trying to help.
And we made some earlier decisions based on the understanding that this was going to lose a certain amount of money.
And that's the other, that's the other thing, so yeah.
So this, does this exacerbate that amount?
Yes.
By roughly how much?
About fifty dollars every day, so four, two hundred dollars a week of additional loss that we would feed, so. Which, you know, we figured on, uh, well, four weeks in Ju, July, two weeks in August, and two weeks in, so.
I don't know, in the years passing, I can't remember. Did, I don't know if the daycares went early in the morning, they would go in the afternoons. So now they're, they're blocking out that early session, two days a week guaranteed they're going to pay for it. If they don't go, they're still paying, is the way I understand. So, if they bring ten kids, they're going to offset that two hundred dollars a month. So that was kind of the other reason the board was looking at, trying, because it was a different year. It wasn't something we were going to, you know, obviously we knew there would be a loss, but we'd look at it, and then next year we'd hopefully it'll go back to. And then next year, hopefully it'll go back to normal and then they can come and go.
Yeah, so it's just a bad year in terms of, you know, the council made a decision, which I think was very good. I heard a lot of positives. I used the, I went on Saturday myself, used the facility, it's a great facility. We've had tremendous weather. We have to kind of right-line some of those costs so that they, you know, part of it is also, five years ago, minimum wage was not as high as it is now. Now, if you've got minimum wage of $10 to $12 per lifeguard, if it's open for three hours, you've got to pay. If each one of those people costs 30 people, you've got eight people, well, that's already $240 just a base wage of $10 an hour. So we'll figure some of that out.
Another, another savings too though is there are no, they're not doing any confessions in the morning session during the daycare. No daycare is doing, so there's no confession workers, there's just lifeguards. So that, so now they've not come in until 11:00 when the pool's open to the public. So you have fewer people in the morning, which is helping because they found out they didn't want to do confession.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with it, it's just a matter of, we knew that we were going to have some losses this year, but we want to support families. I mean, that's why Kansville's such a good place to live, so.
We're trying to find that balance. It's, it's hard. That was kind of what the board was hoping.
Lonnie?
No.
No? So that's the group you want, action on each one, or do you have one group?
I think what we could do is just one motion to approve recommendations from the park board.
Any questions on item B then? See none, item C? Okay. See none, and I'm open for a motion of action based on the recommendations from the park board.
I'll write that motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes, sorry.
Okay. We got a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dan. G N G, old business, council salary discussion.
Sure, and including your packet, you've got a memo from our city clerk, and I want to thank her for doing some research on this. That was an item that came up earlier this summer regarding the question of meeting cost, per diem salaries, that sort of thing. And Linda, I would love it if you would go ahead and explain kind of what you've got included there.
Yeah, well, I gave you all the cities that gave me answers and what the current budget is and that with meetings and everything for each the mayor and the council. And then one was if we just keep it, keep the salaries normal. And actually, I think that's probably the best one, and keep the $35 per extra meeting and with the meetings lasting up to three hours. And then if you have meetings lasting over three hours, and I came up with three hours because of planning commission. Usually three hours is the max that we go. We've gone longer, but we can actually make an effort to keep it at three hours. And anything lasting over three hours, an additional $20 an hour. And that helps with, you know, when you're here for all day or you have to be somewhere all day. I would also like to, if that's the one you like, otherwise we could increase the salaries and include all your board meetings, commission meetings in that. And all the, like when, tonight with the work session, that would be included in the salary and not as an extra meeting. But I would really like to, whichever one you choose that you would want to do, I would really like the wording on the bottom that, to add the wording, as appointed by council to attend as council representative.
Any comments? Lonnie?
After reading this, how, you know, the only thing that I've ever claimed was for the safety meetings, the planning and zoning, and going up to meet with the League of Minnesota Cities. How many other meetings are being claimed? I mean, my question is, if we went with number two, but eliminated the $20 per hour, I mean, that's, that's almost, well, that is $3,000 or $1,000 more than it was going for before. We don't have to keep track of all these other meetings, and it's a flat rate. I mean, something needs to be done because seriously, I mean, me and Dwayne spent the whole day down to the courthouse annex.
And now.
And now. And it figures out to like $3 an hour. I mean, it, it really gets ridiculous. The only thing I know, you had mentioned before, and a couple others had mentioned before, that some of the meetings that were being claimed were kind of hippie. So if we eliminate the $20 per hour for all the other meetings and just stay at $5,000 for mayor, $4,000 for the council, that's it, flat rate.
And the only thing, it was actually pointed out to me by another city administrator in another city when I was getting the survey. And she said, not all of the council people or mayors attend as much. Like, Dwayne was part of how many day-long meetings. And, you know, so there, there isn't any extra compensation for that then. When, you know, you have one or two people doing these full day-long meetings and.
Okay, I, I get that.
And that was, that was the point she had brought up.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but if you figure out how many thousand dollars divided by 20, how many hours is that? 50?
50.
50.
Well, and how often will you have these meetings? You may, you may never have to have a whole day at court again. You may, you may not, you know, depending on an administrator or however, you know, you may not need to be here all day for union negotiations.
Right.
So we may not have the situations that we've had in the past come up again.
Right. I mean, Dwayne is the one that really gets more meeting time besides the regalia council than anybody here. I'd like to hear your side.
I'm going to keep quiet.
Well, I mean, it's been, it's been a kind of an odd year for the library board.
Yes, yes.
We had a gazillion interviews to go through that lasted all the do-da-day. Which is, you know, that's part of the job.
Right.
But otherwise, no, it's, it shouldn't be that many long, long, long meetings.
Right.
I mean, obviously, it, I think, it depends on personnel. I mean, that's my, what I noticed from last year was, you know, you had some personnel gaps, and so the council took on more of those responsibilities, which in a normal year, they probably wouldn't have had to.
Yep.
You know, same thing with, with some of the other meetings. I mean, I think either one of these could work. One thing I'd like to take a look at too is the per diems for meals, because I do think that's something that I, you know, I've had in other cities, and I know, I mentioned it to Linda, and she's, we've got some things we'd have to work out, but, because I mean, that's a concern I have is there's, you know, if you're going out of town for a meeting and it's going to be four or five hours and it's going to be through the lunch period, council members shouldn't necessarily, if they're, that's a meeting you've been assigned to go to, you know, that the city should be able to take, you know, and pay for that meal. Because, you know, you're on the city's business. So I mean, that's something else that we might go and take a look at here too. Because obviously, I know, I mean, if you're getting paid $20 an hour, whether your lunch costs $15 an hour, you just, you didn't get anything out of it, so.
Well, and if it was a, if it was a longer than a day meeting, the only problem is we've had this IRS audit, where if it's a day meeting, we weren't allowed to get lunch, right? And lunch is provided. Stayover. Right, it has to be a stayover. So we, we have had an IRS audit, which is why that isn't included, you know, and a lot of things you go to will include your meals with it if it's for a weekend or something. But otherwise, you guys would still abide by the personnel policy of the city where if you stay overnight, you just bring us your receipts and we reimburse you, just like your mileage.
Right. I, I'm just trying to streamline it so there's no confusion or no arguing about what meeting you're going to. I'm just trying to make it straightforward.
Sure. I like your idea, Lonnie, of one price, you do your meeting, because trying to keep track of $20 an hour, that's going to be way too much work. You're not going to, you're just not going to, it's going to be frustrating. If it's one price and it covers all your meetings, it's going to be easier for everybody.
I'd almost rather, and I know it's extra work on our end of the thing, but if it's going to cost less, try it, try option number one for a year. Where you keep it current salary, $35 per extra meeting, up to three hours, and then see how often we really do have these meetings that last more than three hours. Because I do, I think, you know, obviously the mediation you went to was an exceptional event. The library hiring was a very exceptional event, having to hire a city administrator in the same year. It's just been an extraordinary year.
Tight.
And you'd have to do it for two years, I believe, because you have to do it before the next council, the state.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, so any, any action, if we were to take any actions, it wouldn't go into effect till next year.
Right, it goes to no effect January 1st.
Yep.
Well, that's another thing to think about, would also be, so for example, changes to salaries, you would have to delay it. Whereas I think you could change your per diem without having to actually do an ordinance, that could be done at a staff level probably. Or just updating your page schedule in the spring or something like that.
I ran out, I kept talking about it, went to the mayor's here too to get information from everybody before we.
Well, I know we just wanted to get the information, so I mean, obviously, and we could continue to talk about it, you know.
I'm in favor of number one. I mean, it does create a little work, but it's, you know, you're working as a council member anyways, so.
But I went back to old, old sheets too that you guys have turned in, and there's very, very few meetings, like I said, that were more, that I know of. I don't know how long, because you didn't put anything out there of how long the library was for last.
Okay.
So we can, we can bring this back to another meeting.
Good, thank you. Personnel policy. All right, so this has been something we've also discussed previously. The feedback was taken from council members at the last council meeting, and then also we had some redline copies. So Linda worked through mending that and asking some questions and making sure. We feel comfortable now with the version that's available. We feel that it incorporates all the changes, and staff recommends approval for the personnel policy.
Any comments? Dan? Mel?
Yeah.
All your suggestions or somebody? None? I, I had made some comments and prepared, I'm comfortable, I am comfortable with the wording that we have here right now. I'll go on record to continue to say I don't like the comp issue. But that being said, I'm open for a motion of action on the amended personnel policy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New business, American Legion parade.
Sure, in your packet, you've got a copy of our events permit, which we created this spring. Felt like, it seemed like it was a good idea to have so that we can get information, contact information. So the American Legion is looking at, doing sort of a, she's got sort of a write-up there too, if you can read that. Small parade they'd like to do, they anticipate between 20 and 30 minutes long. Basically, just be driving around the block and I guess it's kind of a community spirit kind of an event. Our legion tries to do a lot of those things, and I think they do a good job on. What they're going to be looking for is approval from the council, which then the police chief and I would sign off on as well. Just making sure that we know where barricades are going to go and so that there are any issues after the fact, we can bring it back to them, so. We felt this was a great thing for the community, so, or at least I did, so I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. Any questions? For a motion of action? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Linda, would you forward that approval to Kristi Hahn?
Yep.
Thank you. Technology upgrade.
Okay, and there's nothing in your packet, because this is something that I was just talking a little bit about ahead of the meeting. We were just discussing the CARES Act just very briefly. So based off of what the council had indicated to me back in February and a couple other times, we're looking at potentially upgrading the, the old police garage for council meetings. And as part of that, we know there are certain technological changes that'll make, you know, we have, everything here is to a certain extent. We know we want to do something that makes via remote messaging and remote meetings as well as social distancing even more possible. Because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like this fall or long-term. It'll also extend the life of this building, which is, I think, in terms of, and part of the reason, the catalyst for this is that we are receiving this CARES money. So we did send in our certification for that. And some of the money we'll use for, there are certain uses that are allowable, and you've got some of that information, you've received that from me already. One of them is for technology upgrades related to the COVID. So it seemed like it was a good idea to utilize some of these funds, which we may not be able to use. I mean, I guess my perspective on it is I'm, I'm loathe to send it back to the state of Minnesota if there's a way for us to use it that makes sense. So what I think Linda and I both talked about, I know staff has, has mentioned, what are some of the technological upgrades that you would like to see us go after? We did have some of the computer folks, I'm not sure, who was that, Linda, it was in?
It was All Systems, going to do our cameras now. And our server is actually not being serviced anymore, yeah.
Supported, yep.
Supported. So we do need a new server, and we were going to wait until next year, but now with the, with this money, we can, we can actually do it. So they came out and looked at this and looked at the garage and talked about different options.
Does this help you, chief, with some of the software that you were talking about once upon a time?
Eventually, we will need a server for holding videos.
And that's something that certainly could be wrapped into this as well, I think. Yeah. I mean, that, that's, I mean, the way this money works, and it was fascinating, I did the webinar with the league and the lady from the Department of Revenue, and she kept getting these questions from individual cities saying like, well, can we do this, or, you know, individual projects? And her answer every time was, your responsible authority, which is the city council, has to designate that this project is a COVID-eligible project. And it can be any project if the council says, we believe that this is a COVID-related. Because that's the wording from the governor's executive order is. And as long as they do, it's eligible. Now, I think you're going to find some that are going to kick back by the state auditor because they're a little bit over the top. I think remote access for city council meetings is something, you know, or upgraded police cameraing is probably a very good use of this money, or at least part of it. And it's something that I think we would have a hard time funding otherwise with the, the budgetary constraints that we're going to have this fall. So, you know, some of the things that we were thinking about, obviously, some, some larger display, big screen TVs, which will allow us for a hard, a hardwareed, instead of just, you know, putting a screen up back here, you know, it's on the wall, we can just talk directly to people. Upgrading the, the recording, that's a big part of it as well too. Because what I want to be able to do is, what's legal now is you can have one council member or one staff person. So for example, state of Minnesota would be legal for me to sit up there to push record and for every single one of you to be on a computer talking in. I mean, that's a legal thing now. I hope that it never comes to that extent, because if it does, then city council may not be the top priority anymore. But that is something that could be done, and some of the other cities that have a more financial flexibility have done some of those major upgrades. So to me, that would be awesome, is if we were able to move in that direction so that long-term we could say, you know, what, it doesn't matter. You can even have council members participate from other states. I mean, you know, it's legal for, you know, you had to go to Arizona for a family emergency. You could still participate in a council meeting, and I think that's where we want to go. So any, I mean, basically, I just wanted to give this nugget in your minds. If you've got specific things, you say, hey, you know, some of you, like you work at Mayo Drain, they've got some tremendous technology there. I mean, if you say, hey, you know what, that works great, let me know, because I don't necessarily know. I mean, we're just kind of gaming this out going, you know, we don't know what the budget would be, we don't, but here, we can go to the computer folks and say, here's what we want to see. You know, can you give us an A, B, and C budget, and we'll see what fits and what works.
And part of your TV too, instead of, instead of mounting it on the wall, I would put it on a rolling stand.
Okay.
Just for the fact that it's more accessible to if you need to move to a different room. If you mount it on a wall, now you're trying to move it.
I may as well do it too.
But I mean, if there are wheels, you can move them from room to room, that's, that's, and it's, you know.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, because that's what we're trying to do at school as well, with she went, how, how many users can we get out of one of these?
And you'll be able to use it multiple.
Sure.
Inexpensive.
Yeah, if you can. Yeah, if you can utilize it with Bluetooth, but otherwise, if you're restricted to cabling, that's, that kind of limits you a bit, so two may be the option.
But still, I'd look at that.
Yeah, absolutely. Some of the other technical deficiencies that we have here is inability to shut these mics off, you know, versus the high sens, high sensitivity mics, you know, that you could suspend from the room and, because I'm sure everybody has looked at past meetings and try to get any good audible, it's, it's difficult.
It is difficult, especially if you're wearing masks.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Linda's got good ears, though.
Yeah, you know, I think it would be outstanding for even planning the GES that accesses that we have. So there's all kinds of ways we can go with it, but certainly the telework is a great option.
Well, and I will say that is something else we've looked at for staff as well. So, the police station did do some upgrades, so they were able to do some teleworking. That may be some way where at staff, we, we may look at, for example, having remote, remote access for Nancy, so that she can go in and she can look at the payroll software, she can look at the, you know, what Linda needs to look at. You know, because at this year, we, you know, we provide a lot of flexibility, we rotated staff through so that they all got some time so they could keep up with their regular work, while at the same time, we tried to shield them from some of the issues. I just don't know. And if we have this ability, it would make sense for us to use, use it, so. But just keep it in mind, if anything pops up, you know, let us know, otherwise, we're going to proceed with the understanding that we're looking at these different versions. What we want to do is we'll bring those versions back to you, and you can kind of take a look and say, okay, if you haven't been back there recently, you know, take a look. You know, kind of what I'm imagining right now is heating and cooling, we have a high ceiling there, we'll probably do a drop ceiling. We'll probably put a false wall on the south side, which will allow for, you know, furnace, but also make it a little bit more tight and sound improvements. And then we probably will end up replacing those garage doors, and we're putting some kind of new entrance so that the public would actually be routed through, just through that back area. As I said, to me, it also extends the life of, of life of the building, because right now, you know, we're in a transitional period, we talked about possible new public building, you know, that is something where we may need five more years of this building for sure, and I think it could be very useful.
Another option in there too, we're constrained to what was sitting here, if you had different feeding in there.
And that's absolutely part of it. First off, we're just going to, first off, we're just going to have more square footage.
Right.
You know, but it would be possible even to provide each person their own desk, where you could split, you know, maybe you have something where you can come together or you can split apart for that social distancing.
Certainly looking into the various meeting, media, Skype, Zoom, Microsoft Teams, any of those, because we've all got laptops here.
Right.
The presenter that Mike gave tonight, if he could have just streamed that, we could have been looking at, you know.
Do it via Zoom or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, instead of going.
Yeah.
And he's short and you couldn't see the colors.
Yeah.
So.
He's a little tight on the Excel spreadsheets too, you know, he'll send to you the PDF, but some of that proprietary elements, you know, I kind of got that.
Yeah.
He does a great job, so, I mean, we have, I appreciate it, just fantastic job.
But you can at least.
It'd be easier to see.
Slide it in or whatever, just so you could have.
No, I got you.
Yep.
So no, I mean, that makes sense, and that's what a lot of, I mean, that's where the, the work environment is now.
Yep.
A lot of these companies are investing in that way, so. I just wanted to bring that up to you, because that's where we're going with it, so.
Okay, thank you. Next item, administrators' report.
Sure.
We've hit some of this already.
Yeah, we have talked about it a little bit already. Just wanted to detail the absentee ballot push is coming up. Linda's been in communication with our, our county, they're really pushing very hard. It's going to allow us hopefully to have the nice board turnout we want. So if you are talking to people or if you're interested in, or you know people that are interested in being election judges, she, she may need some additional judges potentially. No, you're good?
I think I'm good.
Okay. We had a few drop-offs, but then we figured maybe we could save a few spots if we're to hire absentee ballots, so.
And it'll be in the newsletter, you know, encouraging people. We still will have in-person voting, they said we can't get away from that, Dodge County won't go to all mail-in or absentee for either primary, so there will still be in-person, an in-person primary if that's the way people want to go.
Sure. So anyways, that's an item, we're following that. EMS, we did have that EMS committee meeting, really appreciate the folks that took the time, we had some excellent presentations. I'm still taking feedback from the EMS board or committee, but I do think that it's probably likely in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some people coming to present to city council as well, just because I think, obviously, the council members are the ones elected to make decisions, but both of the companies that we had come, I thought, had very good points and some not so good points, but they, I think either one of them could be a, potentially a good partner for us. And we want to try and move forward at least so that we know where we're going with that, because, you know, as you talked with, with Mike tonight, we know the infrastructure is not going to get less, so. We talked about the Corona relief, changes to liquor laws, always interesting. I know Nancy mentioned it too to me, that potentially allowing for some liquor sales at the ice arena would be something where we might actually be able to generate a little bit more profit there, as we know in the past, that has been kind of a, a financial drain. So, let's see, other than that. I included a stack of states and cities, a lot of that's been superseded by the COVID, but you can see that we really are right in the range. We've talked about rate structure, so, and then the per diem. Other than that, I do have two other items I just wanted to highlight. One of them, you'll see, the chip ceiling is scheduled to start tomorrow, they were actually working up at the school this afternoon, their parking lot up there, but we will have them starting early in the morning tomorrow, I think on Main Street first, and then Sixteenth after that probably.
Correct.
Not sure what their time, how long that'll take.
Yeah, I think the most important message is stay off Main Street from the signal all the way to the county road. They're planning on starting at six-thirty tomorrow, there's already some no parking signs out there, so they're going to start away at six-thirty, and then when they get out of there at eight o'clock, maybe is about the time the traffic really picks up there on Main Street and parking, so.
And the more they can get done, the faster.
Yeah, that's, that's the idea, is to stay off Main Street overnight, and they'll have the crew there at six-thirty. I had mentioned that the liquor store parking lot will be open, then once the chips, the rocks go down, feel free to park on Main Street, so. Starting at six-thirty tomorrow, get it, get it.
I mean, we got all the patching done, so that road's going to look great. I mean, I'm, I'm excited about that. I know we'll have a little bit of pushback from the business crews, but we'll do the best we can, so. The other item that I was just going to mention was, I've had some calls from folks who would like to, you know, some of these builders are installing new sod and things like that, and they have a general complaint that, well, they're paying for a sewer, even though obviously that water is going into the grass. You know, I talked with one fellow recently and he was very vociferous, and, you know, did remind him that, you know, obviously, you know, in the long run, they're not going to own that home, it's a short-term expense, and it's a cost of doing business, because if we start allowing that, then it means when I water my sod, it should be fine, you know, it should be exempted. Well, the problem is, if I'm homeowner now, I'm expected to get a second meter. So, I did mention I would bring to the council and see if you guys had any feedback on that, but my stance is that we would continue to charge that sewer charge. You know, we, we know that it's not necessarily going into the sewer system, however, you know, once you start making exceptions and allowances, it seems like it's really hard to maintain that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, you tell every homeowner, they want to, they have to second meter, and if they want to do that, they don't have to, it's an option.
Sure. I mean, the only, you know, and what I had mentioned to him is, the only reason I see is sewer forgiveness is, you know, what I kind of call, at least I have always in my career, called it the one-strike rule, like, you know, you leave your faucet on in the backyard, or you leave your hose on, and you throw fifty thousand gallons through it or something, and, you know, you come to the council and say, hey, can you forgive this well? Some councils will say, okay, you get one strike, and after that, there's, you know, that's it, because we get elderly and people like that who have issues, but for this situation, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so.
When our water supply went out, Linda didn't forgive me.
Well, I'm just kinder and gentler than her, is maybe what it is. But anyways, no, so, okay, well, that, that makes sense, the council's okay with that. We'll just continue that current policy that we have in place. And that's all I've got, unless there's any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
All right.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Brandon, engineers' report.
All right, thank you, council. I guess Tim already talked about chip seal, that was on my list here, but, you know.
Sorry.
Chip seal tomorrow morning. The item in your council packet is the ADA transition plan in a draft format, it's something that the council passed, asked to put together just some years ago, it's been kind of on our back burner, but here we are talking about it tonight, so. It is a draft, I'm hopefully looking for a council review and any comments that you have, after assuming you guys are okay with this. We do have some organizations that we're looking at sending this to for their comments, and then kind of finalizing it and posting it on the city website is the process here, so. I'll do a quick overview, feel free to jump in if you've got any questions or comments, and then again, more of a finalizing council at the end here, so. Again, in your packet is the transition plan, sheet two there, the table of contents, I'll kind of go through each chapter explaining what's in this document. This document was actually provided to all municipalities in southeast Minnesota and counties that are responsible for ADA transition plan, so this isn't something that we necessarily created, we just kind of morphed it into what we felt was appropriate to the city of Cassin, so. Jumping into chapter one, self-evaluation, I'm sorry, introduction, excuse me. What's the needed purpose? There is the ADA, you've probably heard of it, it's Americans with Disabilities Act, there is a law that is ultimately dictating this to the city, which ultimately is trying to free up, in this case, our public right-of-ways for people with disabilities, whether it's a wheelchair, hearing impaired, visually impaired, acknowledging the fact that this law is out here and that we can maybe do better against the deficiencies, so. That is the introduction on why we do what we do here in the transition plan. And moving on to chapter number one there is the self-evaluation, that is the first step here, we kind of went through and said that we have all these facilities within our public right-of-ways, specifically sidewalks, railroad crossings, pedestrian ramps, and some trails that have ADA requirements to them, so let's evaluate where we're at, and then we can talk about budgets and what we do moving forward to make them ADA compliant. Sheet six there, classification guidelines, this is what we came up with guidelines for the city, non-compliant priority level one, that in my opinion has the biggest barrier for somebody in a wheelchair or visually impaired there. You can see that one of the pictures there is an example, does not have a tent ramp at all. The other one there is a drive over curb without a curb cut, very difficult to navigate with a wheelchair, so in my opinion, level one, we're saying those are the most important that the city of Cassin feels need to be upgraded and ultimately made compliant. Priority level two there, we tried, we maybe missed the mark years ago, there may be a curb cut there, the domes on the right are near wide enough, the ADA requirements are pretty, pretty strict in what we do, they're very difficult, not only to design, but also construct. And of course, Minnesota winters with plows and heaving and tallnesses get knocked out of the tolls pretty. Level two there is a little, much severe than maybe level one, but still, at the end of the day, it's still not compliant. Priority level number three of non-compliance, see, has the right domes in there, but the grades probably are slightly off, really this is not much of a barrier, it still technically is not compliant, but probably really low on the priority list, it's, it's pretty dang close, but at the end of the day, still not compliant, so we're putting those kind of on the back burner, attacking again priority level number one. Compliant, probably have the best pictures there, we took those in the spring, those are probably more of the recently reconstructed ramps with the correct truncated domes, the correct landings, correct grades, correct joining in the concrete, all that jazz. And then we also have some non-city facilities, which are mainly MINDOT facilities, some county facilities that are in our cities, so we just notify or note that we do have some ramps and sidewalks that are not city there. Moving on to sheet number six, railroad crossings, they also have ADA requirements associated with them there, so we're looking at a compliant cross, I'd have a truncated dome there to warn a visually impaired user that they're going to already cross a barrier, in this case, a railroad track, a, a, a roadway, and then one that's not compliant, they're not showing, are showing that there is no head ramp there. Sidewalks, we broke those up into compliant and non-compliant. Compliance actually broke up into two sections, compliant five foot wide and compliant four foot wide. Why I think that's important is the city of Cassin, starting in the nineties and two thousands, installed a lot of sidewalk that, that is four foot wide, that probably meets a majority of the ADA compliancy, other than the, the passing requirements on a four-foot wide sidewalk, hence why the city doesn't allow them on new subdivision, now we're all five foot. So, moving forward, we're probably doing the right thing, but we have a, you'll see here, once we do some pictures, we have a fair amount that we're calling compliant, but they're four foot, so technically they're not compliant, but at the end of the day, we probably have higher priorities, specifically our non-compliant sidewalks there, what you're showing is the picture there, it's broke up, it's hardened, probably even for somebody without disability to navigate, so that, that's where we want to put our money, and that's where we want to budget into projects and the non-compliantcies, kind of leave those compliant four footers out there as a, as a lower priority for us. Again, we've got some non-cities, for sidewalks, City of Illinois Fifty-Seventh. Moving on to trails, a fair amount of trails, we're building more trails, it seems like, we ultimately have media compliancy for them, it's the same thing there, compliant and non-compliant. And then I'll jump around a little bit to, I have a number, sheet number twenty-two and twenty-three there, it's a pretty little map of the city there. You can see we have little dots, in this case, on sheet twenty-two there for the pedestrian ramps, showing in red there, non-compliant level one, non-compliant level two, non-compliant level three, and then some compliant ramps, mainly the compliance or the products that have been constructed the last couple of years. Railroad crossings are shown in there, and then we've also identified two priority areas, those are ultimately areas that we think are a little higher priority, specifically, priority number one there, the purple area, which is around the library and Main Street, obviously we have a higher usage there with our pedestrian facilities in those areas. And then priority number two, which is around the school, and then the veterans' lawn park there, signifying that the city acknowledges the fact that that's a higher priority than it is maybe in a residential area that, that doesn't have a lot of pedestrian use there. Same thing out of twenty-three, the next figure there, instead of dots, we have lines now, that, that is representing our sidewalks and trails, so you can see in green there is compliant over five-foot sidewalk, compliant less than five foot is in yellow, again, those are good shape, but technically not five foot, so technically not compliant, but we're calling it compliant less than five foot. And then some non-compliant sections of sidewalk there, and then we also have some spot repairs where maybe the block is good, but we have one settlement, so that would probably roll into a sidewalk improvement project, where we just do one spot repair, the whole block isn't going to be reconstructed, let's get that spot repaired, that is non-compliant, and the whole block may be compliant, so. Trying to again manage, manage the, the level of work and what we do to, to best manage our investment in the ADA facilities here. Again, priority areas are the same as the sidewalks, again, the more usage, the more need that, that we have for these pedestrian facilities, we just invest more money there. So those are the two maps that we have, I'm going to jump back to sheet number nine there, that's kind of where I jumped to the maps, I'll jump back to the self-evaluation results, so when we look at those dots and those lines, what percentage of our, our facilities are compliant, non-compliant level one, two, and three, and then compliant for the pedestrian ramps, same thing for the sidewalks there, shows what ultimately our evaluation is. So with that, we can start looking at implementation, we ultimately are spending, well, fifty dollars per year upgrading these pedestrian facilities, so I applaud the council for, you know, acknowledging a need to have these pedestrian facilities, so we acknowledge the fact that we have that already in place, and we are going to continue to do that. Priority areas there, again, we talked about, two, two areas here, we're looking at having some more priority, and we've, we've actually implemented that with some of the sidewalk that we've done in the previous years, been around Main Street, the library, we've done some upgrades there, we've talked about connecting the library to Main Street, and our safe health school planning to the school there, which is majority of project area two there, we're making some improvements, so. That's self-evaluation of chapter two. Moving on to chapter three, improvement schedule, I haven't got the costs yet, which is chapter four, but at the end of the day, I'll jump into priority number four. Over the entire city to make everything compliant, well, six point seven two million dollars, so. I didn't see that in Mike's bonding spreadsheet earlier, so I'm guessing the city's not, and the financial situation to spend that money here to make everything compliant in the,[1702.91] and the financial situation to spend that money here to make everything compliant in the, in the short term. So we have the implementation schedule, chapter three there. Um, setting out some goals, again, these aren't really binding the city to everything, but I think these are, are goals that we could strive to that are realistic, kind of based on the, the investments that we have and need for investments in other, other things within the city, fire halls, sewer plants, et cetera, so. I mean, you see what those schedules are there. Uh, again, five, uh, five years, eighty percent of the level ones, again, those are the ones that are in real rough shape that are a real true barrier, uh, to users. After ten years, um, the two priority areas identified, they get eighty percent of them compliant. And then, uh, we do have thirty years, and then we get eighty percent of the, the ADA facilities compliant. Uh, that's obviously a long timeframe, but at the end of the day, spending fifty thousand dollars, you're not going to catch six million dollars in any, any sort of timeframe, so. Uh, that again, maybe is a message to the council that we have this, I'll call it a financial liability, could be viewed as, um, to get these facilities in a compliant manner. But I kind of call it a financial liability, but also it's an amenity to your, to your cities, something to think about that. Uh, it's kind of a pool discussion, you know, it's a, it's a cost, but it's an amenity too, so I think, uh, it's a good way to, to view pedestrian facilities. Unit prices there, that's just how we came up with the amount, uh, that we need to spend to get the different priority areas in the entire jurisdiction of the entire town compliant. Number five, policies, procedures. This just notes that the city does acknowledge the fact that there's ADA law out there, and we as the engineer follow certain policies and procedures that ultimately result in compliance in pedestrian facilities. Uh, one of the things Tim mentioned earlier was doing more milling overlays and street work. Uh, whenever you do a milling and overlay project, you are required to upgrade your pedestrian and ramps to be compliant, so that's another, um, cost. If you start doing more milling overlay, we'll have to do it. Uh, if you do crack fill chip seal, you're not technically required to. Uh, so one of the things that we, we're working on is when myself and fellow works plans projects, look at if we're milling and overlay something maybe the year before we come in to do a pedestrian ramp upgrade. So that's one of the other complexities that we'll have to bring into, um, our capital improvement planning.
That would also allow for a funding mechanism to help memorialize some of those costs. Though if we would bond using our four twenty-nine bond series with a normal overlay, we could spread those costs into a bond and spread over fifteen years, which is what a sidewalk should last a long time.
Okay, absolutely. So ADA coordinator, so part of this, this document, uh, there's a G S class we've talked about, so Tim is the representative for the ADA coordinator. So if there's any other discussions, anyone who's in there or coordinates with ADA, Tim, it's on your shoulders, so.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Public outreach, uh, just maybe I'll ask for some comments from the council if you do have any. Uh, so we recognize that the community input's important. Uh, we've had some community input through the safe house of school planning, the conf- conf- conference planning process. Uh, so our plan here, what we have in here, is some different organizations that we're looking at sending this plan out to and solicit their inputs, so if you have any other, um, entities or people that would like to send this to, uh, maybe let me know, shoot me an email, let me know how, write it down, and we'll get, get them a copy. Uh, you see, we have opportunity services, SEMCAG, Dodge County Family Services, KAM School. Uh, Jenny Carey there was pretty involved in the safe house of school, uh, planning process. I actually met with her today on the safe house of school projects, the plan, sent her, her comment. Uh, special education, Zumber Education District, Dodge County Public Health, and the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, those are the, the organizers, I'm planning on sending this to, and then make a question for the city is, obviously, we're having some public comment now or discussion. Uh, we could, in theory, have the public hearing or main information session at the, at the later council meeting if needed, at, at interest of the, the council, I don't know if that's technically required. Uh, and then after we receive some comments, it will go on the city website, um, moving forward.
I think it's probably not a bad idea to invite public comment. Something because I, I have on occasion heard people who are wheelchair-bound, not talking to me, but like talking to their grandparents, complaining that, like, I can't go down that sidewalk because the bridge is too steep. So seeing what people actually identify as their priority areas, like, reaching good inside.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's an opportunity to be involved.
Absolutely. So maybe we'll put that on our future council agenda and just put it posting on social media and the city website as an informal public hearing, is that a good direction?
Yeah, and then do a town hall type category.
Perfect. Um, are you jumping back then? Any other commentary on public outreach or? Perfect. Uh, so maybe moving on to chapter eight, it's more of the kind of public notice side that the city, uh, is acknowledging that this ADA law is out here, and we have this document to, to try to adjust, address it moving forwards, that's more of just the public notice there. Uh, chapter nine is a grievance procedure, uh, which somewhat links up public input, but, uh, if somebody or an organization has a grievance against the city to say, hey, you don't have this area and you need it to be addressed, and here's my grievance, well, then that lets, again, the ADA coordinator, in this case, Tim, to hear that grievance out, and we've acknowledged the fact that we have a procedure here to, um, address that.
I can delegate those concerns onto the city engineer too.
Absolutely.
Okay, good management practice.
Yeah. See, we, we as an engineer, the firm, myself, have worked on ADA projects in the, uh, with, mainly with Minnesota Farm and Transit Station, and the head ADA person, the, uh, MINDOT was hurt and paralyzed in a, in an accident. It was a bridge inspection, like a bridge or beam or something fell on him, paralyzed him. He ended up being the ADA coordinator for MINDOT, so. He's actually brought out a wheelchair before and let the able-bodied engineers wheel around it. You know, you think a two percent cross flow on a sidewalk isn't that important? You can't really see it, at least, or wheel it, and you keep going down to the road. Your one arm is the one wheeling, it's, it, you get a new appreciation for, for why these very stringent details are, are part of our life and, and what we do, so. Yes, a little off track there, but, uh, that's why we have a little happier. Monitoring process, this just acknowledges the fact that it's a moving document. As we make improvements and reprioritize, we're going to, we're going to look, look back at this document, but modify it as, as we move forward, um, in some manner, so. After that, just appendix stuff, um, the two figures we already looked at, and appendix there that talks about no public comments, obviously, we haven't really encouraged that yet, and we will be here, so if we get any lineups to the, to the document, and then, uh, glossary terms there, I'm just noting what some of the terms mean, so. Like I said, I want to go quickly through that, I don't want to waste too much time on it. I think it's important, but I didn't want to give into some of the details. I'm happy to answer any questions, comments you have there, or you know, any other organizations or people we want to send this to, obviously, let's, let's send it out.
Yep.
So if it happens, we'll bring it back next council meeting.
Any immediate comments? If not, we'll send Brandon an email, if you have to think of any. Brandon, thank you.
My friend, thank you.
Personnel, the resignation, uh, been accepted by the fire chief, and that's required some council action.
Make a motion for the shot post-thief.
With thanks?
With any questions.
Okay, that a motion? Is there a second? No second, that a motion of second is accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Yeah? Deal? Anything from our attorney?
I don't have anything tonight.
I like the way she put that, tonight.
Anything from the chief?
Thanks for calling.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any questions on the correspondence?
There was one item I just was going to highlight that, uh, I know Dan had, uh, had mentioned and noted there that the, uh, our last sample from the, uh, the sewer plant, we had done that pilot program, if you're familiar with it, in BioBot.
That's right.
And it was, um, was quite interesting to see that, and I have some doubts whether it's a hundred percent accurate, but it does give us a good gauge. Um, you can see on that sheet that's included the gray dots and the blue dots. So the previous samples that we had in May, those first three samples in May, were those blue dots. And they showed, um, you know, estimated between one and maybe five percent, um, infection rate. Um, so this last sample, it was, uh, much higher, and, you know, and, like you said, I'm not sure that that's a hundred percent accurate, but that's the way they, their algorithm works, is they take the sample, what they found in the sample, and they estimate it out based out to the, the numbers. I would guess this is probably high, but it does show what I think you're seeing nationwide, which is that the number of cases is much higher than we would even possibly fathom. Now, that actually makes more sense to me than being only one percent, because I feel like there are a lot of folks who have gotten it, probably never even knew. But I just, Dan had mentioned that too, and I thought I'd highlight, because it is fascinating to see that, that spike, so.
When I read it, I was, I wanted to make sure I was reading it right.
Yeah, I know.
It seemed like, hi, so I wanted to have.
That's all I've got.
All right. Anything else?